Good evening and thank you all so much for your patience with us. We are here for a public hearing. Ordinance number 2023-13. An ordinance to establish rules and regulations for recreational vehicle parks. Oh, excuse me, that's not the correct one, I'm sorry. Excuse me, okay. Ordinance number 2023-15. An ordinance authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of a few in lieu of tax agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, the county, and Agro America Incorporated, a company previously identified as Project Field Trip. Acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities at one or more locations in the county collectively the project. Number two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project. And three, other matters relating thereto. So we'll begin our public hearing as it relates to ordinance number 2023-15, which I've just read. I think that there may be at least one person who may want to speak on this particular public hearing. Now, anyone wishing to speak will ask you for your name. And I'll just ask whether or not you're a Williamsburg County resident, I won't ask you for your address on the record. But your comments have to be, or your comments are going to be limited to just this particular ordinance, it can't be about anything else. It has to be about this particular ordinance that we're addressing with this public hearing tonight. All right.
Hello.
Yes, sir.
Tommy Dukes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dukes, good seeing you again.
Reside at 2340 Manning Highway, Greenville, South Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Have questions on this ordinance. What does Agro America produce?
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and just listen to all of your questions.
Okay.
And then I'll have someone to address those questions once we're done.
All right, where is the location of the multi-county industrial park? Is there any environmental data available? Has an environmental study been done? Will the development of a multi-count industrial park affect the water of the local citizens? Are there any plastic residuals that will need to go to the county landfill or another landfill? Manufacturing is normally not, there's no zero hazardous waste, so we'll only know what needs to be disposed of. And then I would like to know those answers, but in that, since this has been sprung on us, the name of the company just tonight, I would request that the ordinance be deferred or delayed because this is the first time that the public has been notified that the company is Agro America. And more information needs to be provided to us.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Freysen, would you mind, this is Mr. Gillian Freysen, he is the Economic Development Director as well as the Director of Operations for Williamsburg County. I'm going to ask him to, to address those questions for you. First of all, I think his first question was, what does Agro America produce?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of council, thank you for your questions. Agro America is an agribusiness manufacturer in Andrews and Georgetown. Their headquarters in South Carolina is in Georgetown. And they have two facilities in Andrews on the Williamsburg County side. They produce, in the Georgetown location, they produce a membrane that is used in landfills and stormwater technology. It, they are a zero-waste type facility. The facilities that they operate here in Williamsburg County, they use PEP resin. They use PEP resin to produce pipe fittings. This particular resin, if it has a deficiency or if there's some malfunction, it could be then melted back down, turned back into pellets, and then reused again in their product. Again, I don't remember exactly when they came to Williamsburg County in Georgetown, but they have been existing probably over 20 years or so in both counties. This, the multi-county industrial park agreement is that, it's just an agreement. So we're not creating a new park or a new facility for these companies, they already exist, they already have land, and they already have assets, they're already on our tax rolls, they're already paying into our county's general fund. They are expanding and, and making the decision to stay in our neighborhoods and communities by providing more jobs and more capital investments.
Where exactly is the industrial park, or where are they located? You say Andrews and Williamsburg County, but where exactly?
I don't have the address. It's right off of 4151, right at the crossroads where there's a church, there's a four-way cross intersection, I forgot, it's on 4151. They have one location that's right there off of 4151, and then another location right off of 521. And then their location in Georgetown is in the industrial park in Georgetown.
As we said, we'd like to request it be deferred so we can, can get more information on it.
Okay, I hear that, and again, as I said, these companies have already been existing in Williamsburg County for over 20 years. They employ probably over 100 people in the three locations. They provide a competitive salary, and they are, again, making the decision to stay in Williamsburg County, expand, and provide more jobs and capital investment for the county.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dukes, right, did that, I think that answered all, six of, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, six of your questions.
He said that they have no waste or whatnot, but has any environmental data available for them?
So that the ordinance itself is, when, when companies locate or expand in any county, in order to get certain tax incentives, the South Carolina state statute requires that they enter into a multi-county industrial park agreement, which means that they have to agree with another county to share their tax revenue. So in this instance, because it's a Williamsburg County project, so we'll be sharing 1% of the tax revenue that they will be paying to the county, and that Williamsburg County will receive 99% of that tax revenue. So again, we're not creating a new industrial park, or building any new buildings, or building any, you know, new infrastructure. There's not going to be a significant increase of water usage or anything like that. It's just a company expanding.
Mr. Freysen, if you would please, can you elaborate, because I mean, we did a tour of the facility. Can you, for the benefit of those that are here, especially the members of council, but also for the audience as well, and the people that are viewing, can you explain to us the products that they actually make at this particular company, please, sir, if you would?
Yes, sir, so in the Williamsburg County operation, the reason why it was codenamed Field Trip is because I took the county supervisor, several of our council members, the mayor's, their council, our water and sewer authority director also went with us to see the product that they produce in this particular facility in Andrews. And so they're, they're pipe fittings that can be used for water, sewer, stormwater. There you go. I did not see y'all sitting here. Y'all just let me struggle through this, and y'all are right behind me. Yes, absolutely. Sarah, this is Sarah Daniel, if you want to come forward.
We've been in business since 1988, we've been in Andrews and Williamsburg County since 2012.
Can you hand her the microphone, they can't hear. If you would please, just come up and introduce, Mr. Dukes, do you mind if she comes up and introduces herself?
You were doing a great job.
Can you introduce yourself to, for everyone here?
Sarah Daniel, and I've been with Agro America for 22 years, I'm the legal contracts manager there. Like I said, we've been in business for, since 1988, we do make primarily geomembrane in our Georgetown facility, which is also where our corporate office is located. We, whenever, you probably may remember the old performance fabrics business, that's where we are. That's where we have our two facilities. One of our facilities makes the pipe and fitting, fittings, which Cassini is holding up there, a couple of samples. They're, you know, are used in like gas and, gas and water supply applications, wastewater disposal, gas distribution, mining, landfill, industrial, and irrigation applications. They can be heat fused to any other pipes that are manufactured with a similar resin and to create a leak-proof system there, where we call HDP pipe, which is high-density polyethylene. We don't have hazardous waste, anything like that, but we've been, we've been in business for a long, long time. Our parent company is in Austria, and they've been around for probably way longer than we have, 50-plus years. And anyway, we're, primarily what we are doing with the expansion is, we're bringing in a couple of new fittings machines to make different sizes to add to our product, current product line. Different sizes that we currently can't make with the machines that we have, and they're pretty big, expensive machines. That, and then there's a lot of, a lot of additional equipment that goes with all of that. So that's, that's a...
And you also have a Charleston operation?
Yes, we have a Charleston operation, we make X, what we call extra, extra-large pipe there, it's so big that I, one of, you could stand up inside the pipe. It's primarily used for like a desalination, desalination projects. We did a project to Kuwait, that was our first project. We make other smaller pipe there, but primarily it was built for large pipe, so all kind of pipe. We're in all kind of, all kind of geosynthetics. Started with geomembrane, we branched out and we were doing geotex style over in one of the Andrews facilities, the primary one where we have the new machines is the fittings facility. But I don't know if that answers.
Very good, thank you so much, thank you.
Questions or whatever, but yeah. Anyway, appreciate your questions.
All right. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that is, that wants to speak as it relates to ordinance number 2023-15 for the public hearing before we begin our council meeting? Is there anyone else? All right, with that being said, we're going to now move on in to our regularly scheduled county council meeting. Let us bow our heads as we look to the Lord in prayer. Most gracious and amazing Father in heaven, Lord God, we thank you for another day. Lord God, we thank you for another day that you've blessed us with. Father God, we ask you to come and be with us tonight as we attempt to handle the business for the people of Williamsburg County. Father God, we invite the presence of your Holy Spirit into this meeting tonight. Lord God, we ask you to grant us the courage, the wisdom, and the compassion, Lord God, to make the right decisions that would be in the best interest of the people that we all serve. Lord God, we ask you for your continued blessings upon each and every one of us that's assembled here tonight. Father God, we ask you for your continued blessings upon this county and all of its residents. In your most precious and holy name, we pray, let the people of God say amen. Amen, amen. All right, I would like to offer, I would like for someone to offer a motion to amend the agenda. We've, we need to vote on the three holidays that we gave to the employees. We should have done that earlier, and it's my, my mistake that we did not do that, and I ask that you all please forgive me for overlooking that. Let's just write it off as a rookie mistake, but I would like to offer, I would like for someone to please offer a motion to, for us to name the dates, Friday, December 22nd, 2023, Sunday, December 25th, 2023, and Monday, December 26th, as county holidays for county, for the county of Williamsburg. Is there a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Supervisor.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda? That's it.
I'd like to offer a motion to amend the agenda, to amend the agenda to include what the supervisor just mentioned.
We have a motion that's been made by Councilman Woods, is there a second?
Second.
There was a second by Councilman Wilson, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you so much, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. All right, so I need a motion to accept the days, Friday, December 22nd, 2023, Sunday, December 25th, 2023, and Monday, Monday, excuse me, December, Mon, Lord, where'd I get Sunday from? Monday, December 25th, and Sunday, Tuesday, December 26th. I guess I'm looking forward to Sunday, amen. To, to be our official Christmas holidays for the county employees, is, is there a motion?
Motion to accept those dates as our holiday dates.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilman Wilson, and we have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion has been carried. Thank you all so much for your patience with me with that. All right. Ordinance, well, approval of minutes. We need a motion for the approval of minutes from our public hearing and regularly scheduled council meeting from December 4th, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So move, Mr. Supervisor.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hales, is there a second?
Second, Miller.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. All right, our ordinances, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight, okay? Second reading of ordinance number 2023-16. 2023-16, an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the agreement for development for joint county industrial park by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property located in Berkeley County, South Carolina, now owned and operated by Jesson Lane LLC and other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept second reading of ordinance number 2023-16?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to accept this ordinance by Councilman Woods, is there a second? We have a second by Councilman Wilson, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, our ordinances, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight, there are no ordinances for first reading tonight, okay? Second reading of ordinance number 2023-16. 2023-16, an ordinance authorizing and approving an amendment to the agreement for development for joint county industrial park by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain property located in Berkeley County, South Carolina, now owned and operated by Jesson Lane LLC and other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept second reading of ordinance number 2023-15? We have a motion by Councilman Floyd and a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that third reading has passed and the ordinance has been adopted. Committee reports, we have one committee report tonight, and that's from the bid committee, and it is in regards, it is in reference to the sale of the remaining seven used recycling buildings in the bidding as one bundle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bid committee met on Thursday, December 14th of this year, and we, the purpose of the meeting was to receive bids on the remaining buildings that were not sold or were not bidded out on the initial bid project. And there were seven buildings that did not, were not bidded on, that's Bloomingvale, Keys, Earls, Hemingway, Neesmith, Blakely, and Lanes. And we bundled them, we bundled the remaining seven into one bid packet, one bundle, and bidded on them as a lump bid, and we, the starting bid was advertised at $2,500, and we only received one bid for that, for that bundle of buildings, and that person bidded $2,501. And that person was Berthina Conyers. She submitted that bid of 21, $2,501. So it is a recommendation from the bid committee that we go ahead and approve and accept that bid of $2,501 from Ms. Berthina Conyers. So that's the recommendation coming from the bid committee, and I do offer that in the form of a motion.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Woods to accept the single bid from Ms. Berthina Conyers, and the amount is of $2,501 for those seven, those seven used recycling buildings. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
All right, we have a second by Council, Councilman Miller, are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that we have accepted the council, the bid committee's recommendation to accept this bid from Ms. Conyers in the amount of $2,501. All right. We have two appearances tonight on the agenda. We have Mr. John Moon, who is the Black River State Park Manager, and also Dr. Lewis Drucker, Black Scenic, Black Scenic River Advisory Council member. All right. Mr. Dr. Drucker, excuse me.
Evening Supervisor, Council. Congratulations, Councilman McKnight. Some of you know me as Lewis Drucker, local dentist, some of you know me as a long-term Black River enthusiast and advocate. Tonight, I'm here as a representative of the Black Scenic River Advisory Council. South Carolina has designated Black River as a scenic river decades ago. Tonight, we're going to talk about the update to the Black River Scenic, Black River State Park, as well as the river trail that is being formulated. With me tonight is Mr. John Moon, who is the Black River State Park Manager, and also Ms. Erin Pate, who is with Open Space Institute. I have a poster board on the left here, that is an updated poster board that shows some of what this magnificent project is all about, and it was not, it is not without Open Space Institute that this would have got off the ground. They are the point of the spear. We will be able to answer questions concerning the park tonight, and if you or any of the public, after the meeting, in the order of time, wants to ask questions, we'll be glad to stay here and answer questions about this. It's an incredible project going forward, and right now, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. John Moon and let him give you an update of what's going on here in Williamsburg and Georgetown Counties.
Mr. Moon, good afternoon.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure being here, I've had the opportunity of working with the Park Service for 20, little over 25 years, and to come down here and kind of live, I know it sounds cliche, but to, but to live this dream of producing something special in the, in this community is, I think it's going to be a big deal, I think it's a big deal from a lot of different standpoints, from an economic development standpoint, but then I think about those little kids that, that don't have, you know, a lot of opportunities to get on the Black River because of access, and I think we're going to have a strong opportunity to change that. I think we'll, I think what we'll see in the upcoming years will be something that we can, can we all be proud of, that there's, there's obviously a lot of concerns that, that we're working through and being proactive to approach.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that we have accepted the council, the bid committee's recommendation to accept this bid from Ms. Conyers in the amount of two thousand five hundred and one dollars. All right. We have two appearances tonight on the agenda. We have Mr. John Moon, who is the Black River State Park Manager, and also Dr. Lewis Drucker, Black Scenic River Advisory Council member. All right. Mr. Dr. Drucker, excuse me.
Mr. Supervisor, Council. Congratulations, Councilman McKnight. Some of you know me as Lewis Drucker, local dentist. Some of you know me as a long-term Black River enthusiast and advocate. Tonight, I'm here as a representative of the Black Scenic River Advisory Council. South Carolina has designated Black River as a scenic river decades ago. Tonight, we're going to talk about the update to the Black River Scenic, Black River State Park, as well as the river trail that is being formulated. With me tonight is Mr. John Moon, who is the Black River State Park Manager, and also Ms. Erin Pate, who is with Open Space Institute. I have a poster board on the left here that is an updated poster board that shows some of what this magnificent project is all about, and it was not, it is not without Open Space Institute that this would have got off the ground. They are the point of the spear. We will be able to answer questions concerning the park tonight, and if you or any of the public, after the meeting, in the order of time, wants to ask questions, we'll be glad to stay here and answer questions about this. It's a incredible projects going forward, and right now, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. John Moon and let him give you an update of what's going on here in Williamsburg and Georgetown Counties.
Mr. Moon, good afternoon.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure being here. I've had the opportunity of working with the Park Service for twenty, little over twenty-five years, and to come down here and kind of live, I know it sounds cliche, but to live this dream of producing something special in this community is, I think it's going to be a big deal. I think it's a big deal from a lot of different standpoints, from an economic development standpoint, but then I think about those little kids that don't have, you know, a lot of opportunities to get on the Black River because of access, and I think we're going to have a strong opportunity to change that. I think we'll, I think what we'll see in the upcoming years will be something that we can, can we all be proud of, that there's obviously a lot of concerns that we're working through and being proactive to approach, and so that we can kind of marry those concerns for the betterment of all, for everybody. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, it's a pleasure to be part of it, and helping each and every one of you guys, everybody in this room, councilmen and whatnot, that, to have this opportunity to breathe new life into Williamsburg County and parts of Georgetown County, but ultimately Williamsburg County. At this time, we're in the process of focusing on three major tracks in Williamsburg County, what we're calling our Heinz Canada Track, our MS South Track, and our Mead Track, and those are all located right here in Williamsburg County. Our Heinz Canada Track's located off three seventy, three seventy-seven, three seventy-seven, and then five twenty-one, and then three, five twenty-one is our, is our major track. That's where our major visitor center would go. That's one that's, OSI's got a really, they're a lot further ahead than us as far as government and, you know, procurement, and their procurement's totally different, so there, there's lots of steps ahead of us, but there, the hopes of having the, the two kayak launches that are present there being established should hopefully open fall, maybe sooner, but I'm gonna go fall twenty twenty-four. So we're looking less than a year out, we should have some, some new opportunities for kayaking, canoeing, some trailhead activity being planned there. We're also in our forestry management plan process as well, we're doing some thinning and some timber harvest that's going back into allowing us, the sale of that, that timber's going back into the, the opportunity to, to produce the park and some of the trailheads and that kind of thing that we're working on. So, but it's obviously a long time coming, and again, a privilege to be able to be a part of that. Again, I think we're also working on, just proactively working on the, from an emergency, you know, action standpoint, and is, we have a mock exercise that we're working towards in January, we'll do a little mock exercise from a, just emergency standpoint, if someone's, you know, got issues on the river, and how will we, you know, work to take care of that individual? So just an opportunity that, we all know that when you put extra people on the river, someone at some point's gonna have something go wrong, and how do we respond to that? And with the help of Dr. Drucker and the Advisory Council, we've had an opportunity to kind of put that on the, on the docket to do, and hopefully it turns out good. So I'm excited, I appreciate you guys giving the opportunity to speak. Thank you all.
Couple of items I want to add to that. The, the idea is, we're trying to actively lobby for another game warden in our district. They are stretched thin. If you don't realize, our district runs all the way up into Marion near Dillon, and these guys are stretched thin, and the idea is that every county in the state next year wants another game warden, but not every county in the state has a park the size of this being developed. And in the next five years, John Moon, with his experience in state parks, thinks that there will be tens of thousands of new annual visitors to our county, tens of thousands, primarily using the river. Well, we want this to be the most wonderful state park in South Carolina, not known as the most dangerous state park in South Carolina, and so that's why we're actively lobbying this process to try and next year's budget the state to get another game warden. As I said, Open Space Institute has had a big part in this. This project is still growing. Recently, there was another one hundred and eighty acre tract added to some of this, and so this is still a dynamic project, it's one of a kind in South Carolina. There is not a riverine state park in South Carolina. You know, most of the time, you go to a state park, you pull through the gates, and you've arrived. Well, here, you've got multiple properties with multiple amenities that are connected by our river.
That's right.
And the final thing I'd like to say is, one of the reasons I'm so on board with this is because we cherish our natural resources, in particular, Black River, and we want what our grandparents experienced on the river, the same thing for our grandchildren to be able to experience, by preserving the river in its natural state and keeping it like that, and keeping landowners, timber industry, and river enthusiasts, hunters, fishermen, everybody happy. It's a big balancing act, but we think we got a great start on this.
Dr. Drucker, one quick question. And you, for you are Ranger Moon, when is the last time South Carolina opened a new state park?
I think this was less than twenty years ago, but almost twenty years ago.
So, the first park in over twenty years that's being created in South Carolina is being created in Williamsburg County.
Williamsburg and Georgetown County.
Williamsburg and Georgetown County.
And Open Space Institute is the spear, the point of that spear that started that conversation.
Oh, I'm getting to Ms. Pate. I'm definitely coming to Ms. Pate, you know. Councilman Wilson, I know you want to chime in on this. I met Ms. Pate through Councilman Wilson shortly after I took office, and for those of y'all who don't know, Erin, please stand up. This is Ms. Erin Pate, she is with the Open Space Institute. I have to admit, and I'm sure Councilman Wilson will agree with me, I don't know of anyone, Dr. Drucker, that worked any harder with this project than, than maybe you and some others. Erin, to say that she's not from Williamsburg County, I mean, she fought for Williamsburg County, she advocated for Williamsburg County, and I just, I'm glad, I didn't know I was gonna have this opportunity tonight to publicly thank you for all of the work that you have done to bring, help make this park a reality. There are a lot of communities here in Williamsburg County that are going to benefit from the work that you all are putting into this project. I am excited about it. I think this is a game changer for Williamsburg County, and I'm very excited about it, and I think that there are going to be a lot of opportunities for local business, a lot of opportunities for our residents to benefit from this, and so Erin, I just, I want to just thank you, Councilman Wilson, you want to chime in?
Most of the, I was waiting on you to finish, because Erin knows anytime I see her, I get overly excited. We've been on this journey for over a year now, and thank you so much for the hard work that you have put in. Dr. Drucker, my former dentist, I'm just glad you're who you are and working on behalf of Williamsburg County. And for Mr. Moon, it is, thank you, and you mentioned safety, and without any cause, we have to put safety first in whatever we're doing. My question to you is, will you be the only ranger, or do you have a shift of rangers? Are you still hiring?
Yeah, well, I'm the manager, so it kind of starts with me and then kind of trickles down from there, and at this time, we do have two that we should, that I hope we're able to hire before the end of the fiscal year. I'm hoping that it'll be probably more February, March. As we get closer to kayak launches opening, I think those two, those two jobs will come on board, and we'll be able to hire those out. Those will probably be, look more like off-park rangers, where they'll be rangers, but they won't necessarily live at the sites. And then as we continue to develop those sites, I would imagine, as you look at the map, and you kind of start seeing the different units, Unit One, Unit Two, that's located on this map, each one of those would have a representation onsite, whether it's, and it could be more than one, but at least a ranger on each one of those separate tracks, where I'm down in what I call the Lieberman or Ranger Track, which is kind of the mitten, if you will, just before you get to Rocky Point Community Park. But from there up, obviously, there would be a ranger or two or more, and then, of course, you're, you know, you'll also have maintenance individuals, maintenance supervisors, and what we call maintenance rangers or park technicians that help do a lot of the everyday maintenance chores that a park presents. So there'll be, there'll be a lot. It could, I mean, without, obviously, knowing exactly, it could be one of the bigger, you know, employment opportunities that the state parks have, just because of the amount of properties that keep coming onboard, and as we continue to try to make opportunities there, whether it's through cabins, or, you know, treehouse type cabins and campgrounds and hiking trails and bringing people in, it'll continue to grow, and as that happens, there'll be more and more need for employees.
And if someone wanted to be employed, where would they need to go?
Yeah, just South Carolina government jobs. We post all of our openings there, they can always contact me as the park manager and share with me a, an email, if you know individuals that might be interested in future employment, just have them send me an email, and then I can forward them, you know, as soon as I see them and I get them and I get position and job, they can see announcements, I'd be more than happy just to, you know, shoot them an email, let them know that it's, that it's open, and they have an opportunity to apply.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
One last thing, Councilman. This, Supervisor, this is separate, but still, it tags in with what this town of King Street is doing with that HUD grant that is in process, with the landing right over there, a Black River Landing, and with Irvin Landing, and with out at, down at Rocky Point Forest Landing Park in Georgetown County. So there's a lot going on in coordination here.
Councilman Floyd?
Just a couple things. Like yourself, Mr. Supervisor, and Councilman Wilson, Ms. Pate and I know each other from a long time ago. Mr. Woods, you may remember Ms. Pate from way back when, too, but anyway, that was about fifteen years ago, when the landfill. But anyway, we're not going into that, this is happy times.
Then let's not go into that.
Dr. Drucker, I was really excited to hear you say you want to keep the river in the state that our grandparents gave us and for our future grandkids. For many years, one of my favorite trips, when I was in college, me and a group of my friends would put in Black River up at Bruington, which is up above where all of these projects are, and we would drift Black River and stay back behind the old Camp Harmony one night, and we'd drift down to, towards King Street, we may end up behind Attorney Shula's house back in Etta Landing, and then we'd come out to King Street on Saturday afternoon, and those were just some of the most fun times I had as a young man growing up in Williamsburg County. Mr. Moon, I heard, I see you here excited, you don't know this, but Dr. Drucker knows no, I'm an outdoor enthusiast. When I was in college, my dad carried me to the director of Francis Marion National Forest and pushed me to be a park ranger, and I see you coming in all happy and smiling and in a good mood, and I envy you. I wonder if I shouldn't have listened to my dad instead of going to law school, but I too am excited about this project, and I, for one, as a councilman, would certainly aid and assist y'all in anything. One question I do have, though, I've heard about the number of acres in Williamsburg County, how many actual parks is it in Georgetown County and the number of acres, if you know? I don't know if you would know that or not.
I don't know the total number of acres.
But how many parks is it?
Right now, we have the, we just acquired OSI, the Warehouser Track, then we have the Lieberman Track, which is right now still owned by the Nature Conservancy in Williamsburg, I mean, excuse me, in Georgetown. At this particular moment in time, I think those are the only two that are actually in Georgetown, if my mind serves me correct, but I don't know, other than the Lieberman Track where I live, two hundred and seventy acres, the Warehouser Track is eighteen hundred. So, so that's, you know, nineteen seventy right there, and I don't, I think that might be the only two tracks that we have at this time currently, and that's changing. I mean, that may be different next week, but right now, those are the two tracks that I know of off the top of my head that are, that we own.
I think our friend has some updated information for us.
Other, and you're referring to the state parks, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so what's really cool about this whole park network along the river is it's the state park, but it's also county park, the Ben Irvin Landing, it's also the Town of King Street's park, and it's, you know, there's a whole set of parks that are either privately owned, like the Black River Cypress Preserve down near Bloomingvale, or Ben Irvin Landing, or in Georgetown County, the county has Rocky Point Community Forest, so it's really a collaborative effort among a whole bunch of different jurisdictional agencies. So, yeah.
You're welcome.
Anyone, yes, sir.
Yes, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Erin, I've been knowing Erin for eight years now, and we won't go into when we first met, and under those circumstances, but I will say that in my very first year as a councilman, Erin gave me the opportunity to go to the State House to address some senators concerning some things that we were going in, and I know that Erin is involved in it, she is gonna be in it wholeheartedly. Erin, thank you for everything that you've done for me personally and Williamsburg County. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you all so much, thank you.
And so we'll have the board here after the meeting for anybody that has any questions.
Thank you so much, all right. All right, at this time, we, our next appearance is Ms. Cheryl Lane, who wants to offer comments about the potential solar industry development in the Greeleyville area and the Solar Habitat Act of South Carolina. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lane?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Not used to microphone. May my daughter pass out some handouts for council. I am Cheryl Lane, I live at seventy-six Mount Vernon Road, Greeleyville, two nine zero five six. She used to teach middle school, too. I tried to condense this, I can be long-winded, as my daddy used to say, but I'm just gonna read some of this. "I, along with many community members, am opposed to the destruction of timberland and farmland in Williamsburg County for the construction of utility-scale solar farms. And please note, I will not use the term solar farm again, because utility scale means it's a power plant." What we know, your first handout is actually data that I found online that came out in two thousand and nineteen that shows where IKEA bought fifty-eight million dollars worth of land on seventeen thousand acres in South Carolina for forestry. The IKEA parent firm has bought the seventeen thousand acres for just under forty, fifty-eight point five million dollars in Georgetown, Clarendon, and Williamsburg Counties. Backside, the purchase was made by the Ingo Group, which is a Dutch holding company that controls over three hundred and fifty IKEA retailers. Public records show IRI Forest Investments spent five point eight million dollars on land in Clarendon County, eleven point six million dollars in Georgetown, and forty million dollars in Williamsburg County. The purchase across these counties was fifty-eight, over fifty-eight million dollars. The seller was listed as Sustainable Growth LLC. I, I bring this to your attention because the company made this news release information, and the next to the last line in this news release is the most important. "The land will be used for planting and maintaining trees, and will add to the company's forest holding for use of wood." That was in two thousand and nineteen. At the last county council meeting, I reported what we knew, and what we knew was that several hunting clubs in our area received notice that they had to vacate the property November the tenth, and several of those land leaseholders are present tonight. What we know, I just read, number two, the deed is over twenty pages long, and I calculated over seven thousand of these acres are in Williamsburg County. It was reported to me by the prior forestry management group that the total transaction was over nineteen thousand. At any rate, I didn't provide copies because this is a lot of data. The deed notes that the large tracks are identified as the Greeleyville Unit, the Rim Unit, and the Woods Bay Unit, and they were sold to IRI Forest Investments LLC, licensed out of Delaware. "We, as neighbors in the Greeleyville area, know that core samples have been taken of the earth. We have pictures of the maps, we've talked to the bulldozer driver who drove three days to get here from Texas. They don't use local people to do their work. The surveyors onsite today are from North Carolina today. We know that the same core sample machinery has been seen on the Old Black River Hunting Club Track across from two sixty-one, from me, on the three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four." track across from 261 from me on the 3,774 acre track noted by track map number, tax number 45043003. 800 acres is being discussed as a utility-scale solar farm, not a farm, a utility-scale electric project. This is not the same thing as what goes on your rooftops and what might go in your backyard to power a small-scale entity. We're talking massive. The huge acreage to be considered borders many property owners in the Greeleyville area. And I have several of those people here present tonight. This map is a tiny rendition of what we're talking about. It'll give you the reference point. This area is about 200 acres of the 3,774 that crosses Highway 261 prior, formerly known as Black River Hunt Club. My nephew, his property is here, Wave Patrick. My neighbor Tommy Dukes is located here, Wave Tommy. Church members are in the back because Mount Vernon Church splits this little triangle right here. My family owns 25 acres on the corner here and 19 acres on what we call the hill of the swamp. Where you see the lighter area that is now replanted hybrid pines, but you can also tell that the swamp area drops off considerably. And this park ranger, this directly feeds into Black River Swamp because this road here to the left is what community people call Seven Bridges Road. Correct me, but I think we had 14 feet of water there during the great flood. Okay, so that's a reference point. This huge acreage to be considered borders many property owners in the Greeleyville area. Many others will be affected by supporting structures. Today, the surveyor was surveying an additional easement that I assume Duke Energy is going to ask for. Additional strength power lines and possible substations. This is where I have the map of the core samples that have been taken. And we have several witnesses that that is what's happening, and that is what the bulldozer guy told me. Here are a few of the topics that were discussed last week at an over three-hour county council meeting in Sumter that I attended when I heard about what was going on. There was a proposal for a 600-acre solar utility-scale project to go in. And in their particular case, the Solar Farm LLC had to apply for a special permit, and that permit was denied. And for three hours, the Solar Farm LLC told everybody why it would be a great idea and presented what they thought was evidence that it would be a great idea, but the permit was denied. And it was denied based on some of the topics that I'm going to talk about. Native habitat was discussed, as well as threatened and endangered species identified by SCDNR in this handout. And this is for reference only because the SCDNR and Clemson University Solar Habitat Act is about this thick. But you can go online, they have sighting tools for county councils, they have suitability information, as well as things as how you go about protecting your county from what might become just a willy-nilly operation. And we know, for example, on the big tree that is on the edge of my property, not this one, but another edge of my property that borders the Black River Hunt Club, formerly known as the Black River Hunt Club, bald eagles nest in my 80-foot tall tree. And those, and bald eagles are one of the endangered species that are listed on the South Carolina DNR Solar Habitat Act. All right, I'm going to skip down to number four because plants and animals are identified, and it is strongly suggested that on-site inventories are conducted. Number four, decommissioning. If you haven't heard that word as a councilman, you're going to hear that word a lot, probably when you go to workshops across the state. It is a big-ticket item. Decommissioning is the same thing as what the Navy does to a ship that it takes out of service. They have to have a plan to decommission it. It has to come into dry dock. It has to be cut up. Steel workers recycle. Well, decommissioning for a solar, I hate to say farm, a solar utility-scale project means what happens when the tax credits run out and nobody's interested in the solar farm? Because it was never about green industry. I've consulted thermal energy graduates. It's not about the solar energy. It's about, can I get money for a startup while the green money is flowing? And I use the word green money as a pun. It's all about the dollars. And the decommissioning is a big ticket because I listened to Sumter County Council ask the questions, and they said, are you going to give us a surety bond or cash? And then county council asked, have you decommissioned any of these solar farms yet? The LLC had not. So do you get 100%, 125%, 200%? What do you want? Because you don't know the, you don't know the life of that solar utility entity because that particular upstart had never decommissioned one. It has to be addressed upfront in any agreement because if it's not in the solar agreement with the solar leasing agreement, and I'm talking about a county that has ordinances and zoning, and here since we don't, then we are like sitting ducks. We are the most vulnerable county with now a brand-new state park, and we don't have any way to protect ourselves. Farm Bureau of Sumter County stood with the landowners, with the AME church that was going to be affected, and they said, no, we don't want this. And nobody knows how long those companies, in fact, one county council member asked, how long do you plan to own this solar farm? The guy from Virginia had no response. He said, oh, so you might sell it in a year, five years? Then do we renegotiate the surety bond? How do we do that? He didn't have an answer. The national surety bonds are discussed to be sure the cleanup in five to 50 years is not a tax burden on the people of the county. Because if it's not written into the agreement and they decide to go belly up and they're an LLC out of Delaware, that's kind of like getting married in Las Vegas. You have very few legal standings to fall back on. It could be a tax burden to all of us in this room. It could be a tax burden to our children. I won't live long enough for it to be a tax burden to somebody 50 years from now. The National Electric Safety Board codes are important in respect to fencing. These solar utility projects have to be fenced. And I asked the question, I just wrote a note to someone, and I said, why do they have to be fenced? So they have to be fenced. So now what do you do with your deer that you just cut out of 800 acres of their natural habitat? Well, the lady that night said it would be permeable to deer, but not to humans. And I still have not figured that one out. I don't think she'd ever seen a whitetail deer. Land buffers are important, especially to people like us and the AME church in Sumter County, because the lady I talked to, I said, why are you here as a representative of the AME church? And she said, because if they are tilting solar panels that move with the sun, she said, at a certain time of day, that solar glare is going to come right into the front door of our church. Can you imagine 800 acres, I did the math, is 1,056 football fields? So if you've ever attended a high school or college football field, imagine 1,056 football fields taking up a space in our community.
Ms. Lane, I hate to interrupt you. The way our council rules are designed is that they're only supposed to allow appearances for three minutes. Now, what I've done tonight, though, out of fairness to you, because Dr. Drucker and Ranger Moon presented for 20 minutes, I wanted to allow you the same thing out of fairness. And I wanted to make sure that everyone that's here understands that, okay? Because our rules are three minutes. But I only allowed her to go as long as I have because of, it wouldn't be, it would just wouldn't be fair to you. So you got, I just want to let you know, you got five more minutes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I can wrap it up. All right, flip over to the other page, to the back page. This is what I'm here for tonight. I have two questions. I have one statement and a question. So when I finish the question, then you know I'm through. I request a moratorium for time consideration from county council for any new, and I use that term very loosely because I don't know what types of agreements have been already entered into that I don't know about. But I'm using it as no gravel has been put down, no land has been disturbed, that the land still looks the same. That's what I mean by new. I am requesting a moratorium for time consideration for solar construction development or permitting in Williamsburg County. Such a moratorium would allow for discussion and input on a solar development ordinance and would put into place guardrails for citizen input, environmental protections, decommissioning plans, and appropriate sighting. Solar construction is hereby identified as any ground-mounted photovoltaic solar facility with components and subsystems that generate electricity from sunlight to be sold to a wholesale electricity market through a regional transmission organization and an interconnection with the local utility power grid. The area of the facility includes all the land inside of the perimeter of the system, which extends to any fencing land area required for setbacks, landscaping, and signage. Note, this does not include small-scale solar panel projects such as a homeowner might have. The intention of this moratorium is to address potential utility-scale projects. We are at a crossroads. Here's my last question. Do any, do any members of county council or legal council have any knowledge of any county construction permits involving IRI or knowledge of a particular solar entity seeking or even agreed upon with solar leases involving IRI Forest Investments LLC? No knowledge and no dealings. We are at a crossroads. Our county is rich in natural resources. Our land, our Black River, her swamps, the plants, the animals, the people. The very air we breathe will one day be very scarce if we don't protect it for future generations. Our way of life here in Williamsburg County includes daily conversations about fishing, hunting, farming, rainfall, birds we saw, and being outside. We love our county and the closeness to nature that we feel, and we are fearful of outside entities who threaten to take this all away in the name of tax credits and startup grant monies. People in other states and countries will never see what they have destroyed in our communities. Their greed will be the destruction of our way of life unless we stand up. Our ancestors are behind the protection of all of Earth's resources. Future generations are trusting that we protect their environment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lane. Are there any comments or any questions by any of the members of council? All right, thank you so much, and we will take all of that information that you, all of the information that you've given us under advisement. Thank you so much. All right, is there? I've got a couple of things for the county supervisors report. First, Councilman McKnight, please forgive me for not introducing you at the beginning of the meeting. This is our newest council member who has just sworn in at 5 o'clock tonight, Councilman Paul McKnight, who will be representing District 5. And again, please forgive me for not introducing you earlier. Councilman McKnight, is anything you'd like to say to everyone?
Thank you for electing me, and I'm ready to work. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and we got a whole lot of work for you to do, as you can tell, a whole lot of work. But again, thank you so much for your willingness to serve the fine folks of Williamsburg County. And I know I speak on behalf of all of the members of council that we certainly do look forward to working with you. In addition, I also need to make the public aware that our recycling sites will be closed on Monday, December 25th, which is Christmas Day, and January the 1st, 2024, which is New Year's Day. They'll be open the other days as scheduled. Obviously, you all know that we are closed every Wednesday for maintenance, but we will be open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week, and we'll reopen next Tuesday. And so I wanted to go ahead and put that information out there as well. And the county buildings, offices will be closed Friday, December 22nd, and Monday, December 26th, in observation of the Christmas holidays. All right. Two, Lord have mercy, that's the third time I've done that tonight. Tuesday, December 26th. Please, please excuse me. All right, Monday will be closed and Tuesday. All right, thank you so much. All right, is there anything else from any of the members of council?
Yes, I'd just like to say, happy holidays to all our citizens and our employees. Better days are coming.
Amen. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Let's supervise.
Yes, sir.
You know, this morning, or yesterday morning, my phone was blowing up about roads washing out, about dishes overflowing, all this kind of stuff. Can we get an update at the next meeting about? I was talking about Public Works. Can you hear me? We've got to do something different. You know, some roads need to be plowed, some rock needs to be put on. And these, these people, they're about to burn my house down, you know? But, but it looks like, do we need, do we need better equipment? Do we need more equipment? Do we need better operators? Something's got to be done. I don't know what it is. I don't know the answer. Somebody smarter than me is going to have to figure it out. But, but I just wanted to bring it, I just, I got a meeting in the morning, a meeting Thursday morning, a meeting Friday morning, you know? Houses about to get, water's coming up. So, but, but anyway, I just want you to, to work on this, if you would, and maybe come to some kind of conclusion to see what can be done.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And I think, Councilman Lee, I think all of us at this time are feeling this, the same effects of this thing. Whatever's going on with Public Works at this time is not working. And... And, and we all have to get our heads together to find out how we can best come to a solution because, again, Public Works is not working in the current situation that it is in.
Well, I think what Councilman Lee was, was discussing, that may be, Public Works may be a part of what he was, was discussing. But I also believe that he was also discussing all of the rainwater that we also received over the last several days and the flooding. Now, no, I'm not defending Public Works with a comment that I'm getting ready to make. But now, Public Works is not in charge of the amount of rain that we receive in low-lying areas. And, and, I mean, you can't hold Public Works responsible for that. Now, I do realize that there have been some issues that, out at Public Works, and that we have been working towards trying to get those things taken care of. But now, let's all of us be honest, there have always been problems at Public Works. Those problems have not started over the last 12 months. We've been working towards trying to, to make these things better. We have a lot of roads in Williamsburg County. In fact, we've got one road, I think that road is either in you, in your district or Councilman Lee's district. Public Works has gone and repaired that road, I know of, four times this year. And every time that there is a heavy rain, the road washes out. Now, just think about all of the resources that we're putting into that one road. That one road in that, in that one area, and all of the other folks that are, that we're not paying attention to because we're having to pay all of our, spend all of our time with that one road. And so, you know, I'll be glad to, to, to give you all a report for Public Works at the very next meeting. But I want, I want to make sure everyone knows and understands that we're working with a very limited budget at Public Works and some other places. We've got, we'll be preparing in January for the upcoming new budget. And things cost money. And if, if we want to, to enhance and increase what we're doing out at Public Works, I'm all for it. But I'm going to also, you know, see, you know, I want, I want you all to be all for it as well as it relates to what it's probably going to cost. Because it's not going to be cheap. Because we got a lot of roads in Williamsburg County that our county maintain roads. As Councilman Lee stated, it could be a possibility that we may need to hire additional personnel, put additional monies into those line items over there, try to get some, some additional workers. I'm all for doing whatever needs to be done out there. But I, I just want to caution you all that, you know, this stuff costs money. It costs money, there are a lot of roads, each one of y'all got roads in y'all's district that need work done to it. And we, we've got a skeleton crew out there, and we try to put out as many fires as we can as quickly as we can. But, you know, it's going to cost some money, and I just want to point that out. But I'll be glad to entertain it, I'm going to go ahead and do the report for you all next month. Mr. Fryson, who has been designated as the Director of Operations, one of those areas that he has been given to oversee is Public Works, to try to make Public Works more efficient and more effective for the citizens of Williamsburg County. I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
I just would like to inform our council and those who are listening, that South Carolina, the report came out today that South Carolina is the fourth in the nation with the worst roads. So it's not just Williamsburg County, it's all of South Carolina.
Thank you so much for that. But I'll be glad, sir, to go ahead and get you guys a report at the very next meeting. And, and we'll go from there. We, we will begin the process, again, like I said earlier, next year, of working on that budget and beginning that process of trying to make it better. But as I said earlier, some of this stuff costs money. It costs money. All right, is there anything else from anyone else, any of the other?
Yes, sir, Mr. Supervisor, let me go back a bit. I just want to say this, going back to what, I know we've, we've gone beyond that, but I just want to make these comments because it's in my heart, and I think God will kind of hold me for it if I don't say how I feel. I think we need to give some credence to what Ms. Lane was saying. I realize that we've got some, some issues with these solar farms or whatever we call them. But I'm kind of like Councilman Drucker when he said he was an environmental enthusiast. I too am just that. So if there's something we can do, maybe construct an ordinance or something that perhaps we can't legally stop them from doing what they're, they're doing or planning to do. But perhaps we can put some parameters or some provisions in place that can stop them from doing some things that we don't want them to do. And I'll give you an example, building a solar farm or whatever 20 yards from my front door. Those kinds of things we may be able to do. Now, see, I'm not a lawyer, I haven't gone to a day of law school in my life, so I can't say how legal it is to stop a person from doing what they want to do on property that they have purchased or their property. But we need to take a look at it very carefully because environmentally is very, environment is very important to me, and it should be to everybody. So I would just like to say, let's, maybe let our attorney and supervisor and whomever take a look at this thing and see what we can do. If there's something we can do, of course, we don't want all our land to, hunting land, fishing land, because I don't hunt, but I fish, to be taken away when we have the power to do something about it. Now, I heard Ms. Lane said, how far have this company engaged the county in getting this process going? I think the result was none, or no one is aware of how much. With that being said, if there's something we can do to put some parameters in place, maybe through ordinance or whatever form you can do, perhaps we can take a look at, at doing just that. And, and I want to recommend that we go ahead and take a look at that. And let's just don't brush it aside because it's an important issue, and it is one that's going to have a long-lasting effect on the decision that we make right now. So I would just like to say, I want us to take a look at it. And, Madam Attorney, take a look at it and see what we can possibly do legally. And it may be a win-win situation somewhere in the balance, I don't know where. But let's take a serious look at it and see what we can do to not prohibit companies from coming to here, because we don't want to do that. And we also don't want to impede on the rights of the citizens as well. So let's just take a look at it, I just want to say that before I go home and try to sleep tonight.
Sure. And, and I, I didn't mention it earlier, but myself and Attorney Schuler have already began that process of trying to create an ordinance for this council to take a look at as it relates to, to these solar panels and the creation of these, these, I guess you could call them farms, to hopefully address this issue or at least take a look at it. As you indicated earlier, there's a fine line that we have to walk with this because we cannot tell people what to do with their private lands. But we also have an obligation to try to do whatever we can to protect our residents as well. And so, I, I feel as if the, whatever we come up with is not going to make everybody happy. And I'll say that upfront. But we, I do pledge to this council, and equally as important to the citizens of Williamsburg County, that we will do what we absolutely feel is best for both the county and for potential industries that will want to locate in Williamsburg County. Because, you know, we cannot be so restrictive that companies cannot operate or feel like they can operate within this county. For those of you all, with the exception of Councilman McKnight, we went through a very challenging time last June and July with that budget. I wish you all could have been here to see the last night that we got that budget passed, how quickly the members of council got out of here, and how exhausted all of us were. Because we put a lot of time in to that, into that budget. We put a lot of work into it. And I think this upcoming budget, I want to go ahead and just tell you right now, is not going to be any different. We're going to put a lot of work, we're going to put a lot of time into that, and, because that's what we're here for, to, to, to do the people's business. And so, we're going to do what we believe is going to be best for all parties involved. Because we, we are obligated to have to be fair across the board to everyone. Anyone else? Anyone else with anything else? All right, well, listen, on behalf of the members of county council and the members and staff of the County of Williamsburg, we want to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you all a very merry Christmas and a very prosperous and happy New Year. We look forward to seeing you all in the New Year. It is our prayer that God blesses you with more, more than you could ever imagine for both you and your family. Again, we want to thank you all for all that you do to help to make Williamsburg County a better place. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So we have a motion from Councilman Floyd to adjourn, we have a second from Councilman Wilson. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Let the, let the record reflect that the motion has been carried, we are in, we are adjourned.